Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Lake County Planning Commission hearing scheduled for January 26, 2023. We will call the meeting to order. Time is 9:01. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Jim. Do we have legal verification on today's items?
Yeah, all matters on. The agenda had been properly noticed.
Okay, thank you. First item is the consent agenda, looking at approval for the January 12, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Any discussion or questions from the commissioners? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the minutes be approved and that we pass item 4A.
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The first thing we will take up is our first timed item for 9:01, election of a chair for the Planning Commission and vice chair of the Planning Commission. So I am, I've done a year and I know that my vice chair has been very well on his attendance and his everything, so I will go, can I nominate him?
No.
Or it just goes like that, right?
No, I want to nominate him.
Okay.
May I make a comment first?
Absolutely.
I would like to congratulate you on your tenured chair.
Hey, thank you.
Outstanding job.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. Commissioner Fields? Did you, you wanted to nominate?
Yes, I would like to nominate John Hess. Chairman, please. Chairperson.
Okay.
Wait, what was that?
I think she nominated you for the chair position, was my understanding.
I can't second that. I would, I believe the torch should be passed to Everardo and I'd be happy to serve as vice chair. I appreciate the nomination.
If, if what's on the floor is a nomination for Commissioner Chavez to be chair and Commissioner Hess to be vice chair, I will second that. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Excellent. Welcome.
Good morning. Before we begin with our first item, we do have public input. Any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and is not already on today's agenda. Agendas of public meetings and supporting documents are available for the public inspection in the Lake County Courthouse, Community Development Department, 3rd floor, 255 North Warbes Street, Lakeport, California. A request for disability-related modifications or accommodations necessary to participate in the Planning Commission meeting should be made in writing to the Planning Commission Secretary at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. Seeing that it is 9:05, we will begin with our first timed item. A public hearing, consideration of proposed general plan conformity, determination, GPC 22-13 to vacate a portion of Roberts Road, Middletown, applicant Rich and Sheri Lacy. Project location is 24357, State Highway 29 in Middletown, APN 013-054-02.
Thank you. How do I turn this on? This on? Oh, perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Trish Turner. I'm an assistant planner with the Community Development Department and I am presenting this project on the general plan conformity vacation of Roberts Road, GPC 22-13 and CE 22-66. I do want to just say that this is only on the general plan conformity of the existing portion of Roberts Road. I will touch on the new road, the new road to be dedicated, but this is just the conformity of the existing road. The applicant Rich and Lacey Sheri are proposing vacating a portion or Roberts Road that runs through their property. General plan conformance road vacation requests are initially evaluated for conformity with the general plan. Consistent with state regulation, I have identified goals and policies from the Lake County General Plan's transportation and circulation element and public facilities and services element that support this conformity. This is the vicinity map. It's located at 24357, Highway 29 in Middletown. This slide is the current existing road. It's a plat map of the road that is on the official records and the deeds for the easements. And this is plat maps of the road to be dedicated and these are just drafts. Again, this is just on conformity of the existing road. I will be touching on the new road as well. I took numerous photos of Roberts Road, stopping about every 100 feet to take pictures. This is the south end of Roberts Road facing the north. This slide is the new road to be, that is being offered for dedication. And again, I took pictures about every 100 feet. This is where I would like to say that I would like to make an amendment to my staff report. I did put in here that the Laces would like to have the gate locked and they would open it in case of an emergency, but it's my understanding that this is a deed at easement and the gate will have to remain unlocked. So this, this is where I say that they conform with the general plan, Chapter 5, Public Services and Facilities, stating that these properties and the property owners who access their properties through this road are accessible by CAL FIRE, Emergency Services, the Sheriff's Department, and conformity with Lake County General Plan, Chapter 6, Transportation and Circulation. Roberts Road is primarily used as an access road for multiple residents and property owners. Roberts Road is a local road per the general plan to primarily provide traffic movement within this community and are generally low speed and volumes. It is also in conformity with the Middletown Area Plan. Roberts Road is a private road, well, it's a public road, but it's privately used for the residences and it is not used for the movement of goods for the functional road My recommendation or staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the request for the vacation of a portion of Roberts Road is in conformity with the Lake County General Plan based on the following findings. This project has been found to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan, General Plan, Chapter 5, Public Facilities and Services, General Plan, Chapter 6, Transportation and Circulation. This project has been found to be consistent with the Middletown Area Plan, Middletown Area Plan, Chapter 5.3, Networked Streets and Highways. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Trish. Are there any questions from the Commission before we open it to comments?
I'll pull it off for now.
Okay. All right, we will open public comment for this item. If you would like to speak, come up to the podium and you have three minutes. Just remember to please sign in your name on the sheet that's provided on the podium. And if there are no hands in the room, can we check the Zoom as well?
Can I have one person in Zoom?
Okay. Let's let them speak.
Sam?
Yes.
I don't have authorization to have them speak.
Okay, Mr. Hall, can you please just announce your name and you have three minutes?
Yes, I am Robert Hall. Am I being heard? Over?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I am currently in Osaka, Japan, on business and there was insufficient time for me to return in person to offer comments before the board. We were not notified of this meeting. A neighbor favored us of a copy of a letter he received. My wife and I own three parcels that are accessed by the current road. Two of them were created in 1975 when lots of it took place and the third one has a gated, non-exclusive right-of-way to our home. I have a concern that given Mr. Lacy's behavior in the past, in spite of what Trish has said, that he will gate the road and prevent us from using our gated right-of-way. Secondly, in the environmental health, there is no mention of the EPA study going on on his property and adjacent properties about the threat of mercury tailings tainting the water into the Middletown water supply. There's a very large study going on. There are two mines on Mr. Lacy's property. One of them is located just a few feet from the side of the new road. Okay. Recently, Mr. Lacy has used his backhoe to substantially reduce the width of the road. He dug a trench on the west side and reduced the east side by five or six feet and then he put a fence on the road. So previously, the road was wide enough for cars to pass. Now because of his actions, you cannot. So one of the bases of their request for this application was the road was too narrow. Well, that's because they made it too narrow. Now currently, both our non-exclusive right-of-way and Roberts Road are the same. However, if the county vacates the section of Roberts Road as proposed, our non-exclusive right-of-way will remain while Roberts Road will take a different route. This is also true for several of our neighbors, which include Ronald Gott, Laurie Gott-Frankum, Matthew Berish, and Sam Livermore, who also have non-exclusive rights-of-way to cross the Lacy parcel and our parcel. We were also surprised to see that Fire Chief Mike Wink made no comment on the proposed new road, as the road has no turnouts as recommended by state law. We believe the Commission should not act on this matter until Mr. Wink is consulted it and see, get his input. Although the new road description states it as 60-foot right-of-way, Mr. Lacy has already fenced the road, reducing the width considerably and probably to less than 20 feet drivable surface as required by the state law. Again, I'm out of the country and I cannot measure it myself. So there are two deep mercury mines located on the property, which are understudied by the EPA, which I mentioned, as a potential superfund site for the potential of contaminating water sources from Middletown. One of these mines is probably 10 feet from the edge of the new road. Finally, I support what the air quality discreet wrote on page 12 of the agency comment report, calling for mitigation of the super tainted soil dust problem and the road being built on and with mercury mine tailings. This must be agreed to by Mr. Lacy and done by the Laces if, if the other mitigation measures are dealt with. So please delay acting on this permit while outstanding issues are resolved. And I'll take questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If anybody else wishes to speak in the room, you can come up to the podium.
Did you want to? Sorry.
Are the applicants here?
Yes.
Would you guys like to speak?
I just want to say that...
Please come up to the podium and state your first and last name, please. Thank you.
My name is Sheri Lacy. I have lived in Middletown my entire life. We've lived at our place for the last 36 years. Mr. Hall is a very angry, bitter man. Everything he stated is not exactly the truth. We have been good neighbors to everyone. Our road has been finished being a building as we went through the process for the past two years. All of the neighbors, except for the Halls, have been using the new road only for the past two years. We have gone through so many legal hoops to get this done and we would just like it to be done. And of course, we would like to close our gate. And like when Trish called to ask us, I told her if there was ever any kind of emergencies, we would have our gates open, but the road goes right in front of our house and it has and we have our five grandchildren every day. And having our section closed off and everyone using the new road would give us total privacy and access. Our property is on both sides of the dirt road and the grandchildren could be with their animals and ride bikes and use, the big boys are in eighth grade, their motor equipment. The Halls have practically been terrorizing us the past two years as we've tried to get this done and I don't see a way where they will ever be user-friendly for it. So I'm hoping you can help us.
We don't have serpentine on our property.
We, we've had it researched.
Our road is not serpentine.
Thank you.
Also, if there's additional comments and if you would like to speak, you can come up to the podium as well. Just state your first and last name.
My name is Richard Lacy and the new road is not serpentine. I worked in the geothermal for over 40 years. I still work part-time there. I know my soils and I have to deal with it every day. This road is not serpentine. It never has been. And you know, what, what he just explained and he's been harassing us, the dust and they, they speed through, there's, we try and work with everybody. I do the maintenance for 36 years. I've done all the maintenance, the whole road, just to be neighborly. And this is the respect we get from these people harassing us. They block us and it's just, I just don't want to really get into things, but I do have the, the whole 36-year history. So I, I hope things work out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Chavez, if I may?
Yes.
The vacation of the road is actually a public works project. So what we have before us today is the general plan conformity report. We do have our county surveyor here today, so it's, it's good that he's hearing this input so that it can be considered as he takes that project forward to the board, the actual road vacation. Thank you.
I'm going to go back and check to see if there's anybody else in the Zoom room that would like to speak or in the chambers.
No, I don't have any more.
Seeing as there is none, I'm going to bring it back to the Commission for further discussion.
Chair, I do have a comment. I'm, I'm from the District 1 part of this map and I know that area well and I know that road well. And we're here just to, to take on a very narrow subject today, which has nothing to do with the nature of the road, whatever else. However, Mr. Hall does point out the letter from the Air Quality Management District, which I do think is relevant in terms of ongoing maintenance of the road, in terms of how the road was initially constructed, and those are issues for the Department of Public Works. We just want people to know, we're not ignoring those issues today, but our role is very
If there's no further discussion, I'll be waiting for a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission find that a determination at the proposed road vacation is in conformance with the general plan, is exempted from CEQA because it falls within the categorical exemption CE 22-66, Section 15061B3. The activity is covered by the common sense exemption that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to CEQA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? And I believe there's one more.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission find that the general plan of conformity, GPC 22-13, for the vacation of a portion of Roberts Road as proposed by the applicant is in conformity with the Lake County General Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
This one doesn't give...
Have a good day.
Thank you. The last part that I'm supposed to read. And still on that same item, note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. There is a disagree, if there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m., on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination. And we will be taking on our second item. Public hearing, consideration of proposed major use permit, UP 21-46, and design review, DR 22-10, for a new community club building in two dwellings. The applicant is Dan Zamberlin. Project location is 12395, State Highway 175, Lockman, Lock, Lowmont, APN 011-067-48.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. We're trying to get the PowerPoint set up. I apologize for the delay. 21-46. Six J Lodge. 21-46.
21, 21 dash, no, there's 31, 21-31. Can you see it on that? BP C 01, 26.
Um, let's open this up. Go up into the main, main folder.
Where's the main, uh, E area? Okay, this is a double flash drive.
It's on the USB. I loaded it.
Okay. Okay, we have 23. UPX 22, UPX 22-03.
It's 21-46, Sam.
21-46. I'm not seeing it there.
Can you go to the main file folder within the USB drive? At the bottom.
Here it is.
Thanks, Sam.
Hey. Hey, see, it's team effort. What are we going to do? Thank you, everybody. Now, let's go back to here. Come here. Go to the chair. Here's the chair. You want it? That one?
Perfect.
All right. Are you going to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll work the control on it.
Okay, there you go.
Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your patience. Congratulations, new chairman, Ed Verardo, and thank you...
Thank you, Eric.
outgoing chairperson, Christina. We have here a major use permit, is a development review and initial study for a project called J Lodge. And before we start, I want to point out that a neighbor who commented, Sean Rolls, noted that there's reference to a lodge in the staff report. A lodge is not a permitted use defined by our code. So any reference to lodge should reflect a community club building, which is the purpose of this primary building on the site. So the project's located on Highway 175 and Lock Lowmont. Project is located in the PDC zoning district and the sub-districts include development review, design review, DR, and W for Waterway. The site's across the street from an existing youth facility, which you can see by the pool. There had been a resort on the property on the subject site that burned up in 1969, I believe, and the owner of the property now, Dan Zamberlin, wants to rebuild the lodge. Yes, thank you. The community club building. Site plan, this was actually prepared by Conzer Surveying. There was a survey down on the property. There's discrepancy in the size of the property that neighbor Sean Rolls had pointed out. Reference to 2.23 acres was in the original staff report. That was based on the GIS maps. The actual survey size of the property is 1.39 acres. So the survey reflects the actual size of the property. So regardless of size of property, the project fits well onto the site. And I do want to point out that in this area above the property, there's an existing vernal pool. Mr. Rolls had some concern about proximity of the vernal pool to the project. I contacted Steve Zaleski, who did the bio study, and we had a lengthy conversation about whether or not the project could potentially impact the vernal pool. Mr. Zaleski is a former planner. He's a biologist by career and he was instrumental in mapping the vernal pool that's to the north of the property. So Mr. Zaleski has hands-on experience with the proximity of the vernal pool and is also the person who did the bio study for the J Lodge project. So Mr. Zaleski is quite confident that the vernal pool has no relevance to this project and that no adverse impacts would occur to the vernal pool as a result of this project. So the community club building... So, the community club building, these are some elevations of the building, has been designed by an architect. I don't have a lot of comments on the design, other than to say that we've compared it up against the area plan for this area, which I believe is a Middletown area plan, but I'd have to verify that. Sorry? Is it Cobb? Okay. We compared it up against the design requirements that are within the area plan, and there was no conflict at all. It's appropriate in terms of size, scale, proximity. The use is allowed in the PDC zone with a specific plan of development, which is kind of a code word for a major use permit, which the applicant supplied for. We did evaluate it for consistency with Article 41, and there are a number of different categories in Article 41 that have to be met, and those include noise, landscaping, air quality, and several other categories that we had to check this project out against to make sure that it would comply. There's a bit of an inherent conflict in the requirements. CAL FIRE wants defensible space around buildings and areas that are prone to high fire. This is one of those. And so, the defensible space, although no tree removal is proposed, could actually impact several trees. So, we added conditions of approval that prior to any tree removal, they have to do a bird nesting survey with a biologist and a bat nesting survey. And if any nests are discovered, they would have to avoid them. And presumably, it could have some effect on the project. But we, based on the biosurvey, which had negative results on bats and birds, we feel that it was okay to proceed forward with the project, as long as they did a pre-construction survey of the site. So, here are some details. Construction of a 2,100-square-foot community meeting room. Construction of one caretaker dwelling with a garage. Construction of one commercial accessory dwelling with a garage. The community room is intended to support area groups, weddings, nonprofit organizations, and so forth. Proposed are 20 parking spaces, two of which are ADA. The site itself, I indicated it had been developed with a resort. There's a single driveway that accesses 175. Initially, he wanted two driveways, but because of the connection to 175 and the separation distance between the driveways, CAL Trans requested that the two driveways be reduced to one slightly wider driveway, which the applicant has provided. There's an underground storage tank, single wall, that needs to be removed. The applicant's aware of this. The site's relatively flat, and as I indicated, it's in a high-fire area. Conditions of approval, the main takeaways are the removal of the underground fuel tank, improvements to the internal driveway, vegetation along 175 to be trimmed back to aid line of sight, and a CAL Trans encroachment permit is required for the entrance to the site. General plan conformance, we found no conflicts with the Lake County general plan. Cobb Mountain area plan conformance, as I indicated, we evaluated it with the Cobb Mountain area plan and found no conflicts. We evaluated it under Article 15, the PDC zoning district, and the main takeaway from that is it's applicable, it needs to be reviewed against Article 41 performance standards, Article 56.5 development review standards, and major use permit findings for approval, Article 51.4. And as I indicated, it requires a specific plan of development, which is a major use permit. CEQA, we prepared an initial study. It was uploaded to the state clearinghouse on October 31st. We had no negative comments that were returned, and we found that there are several categories that have potential for impacts, which are aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural tribal resources, and noise, although the biological survey and the cultural survey turned up negative results when it was provided to us. Public comments, as I indicated, Mr. Rolls had provided a fairly extensive email with a number of observations and/or concerns. I did respond to the first email the following day after I received it, and there were a series of two or three other emails that came after that I did not respond to. Another neighbor, Julia Knox, had concern about a siren, but there was really no direct link to the project, so I'm not quite understanding why the siren was raised, but I do want to mention that she had provided an email comment. Recommendation, we're recommending that the Planning Commission adopt initial study, IS 21-49, and approve use permit UP 21-46, specific plan of development, GPD 2101, and development review, DR 2209, with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 26, 2023. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Eric.
I'm Dan Zamberlin with the project. Is there time for me to--
Yes, just one second. If there's any questions before we bring it out to public comment in the commission?
No, I'll wait after.
All right. I will be opening public comment. Sir, if you would like to speak, come to the podium, and we have three minutes. Be sure to say your first and last name.
I just brought pictures of the old lodge that was there.
Sir, could you please say your first and last name?
Daniel Zamberlin. Thank you. Well, that's loud. So, these are pictures of what the lodge used to be before it burned down, some of the cabins. Everything's stated pretty well. The impact on the lodge, basically, you won't be able to see it coming up to the vernal pond, so it doesn't really interfere with the sightline on the road and everything. The only thing is, is CAL Trans is the owner of the property with this tank on it. So, they don't want to do anything about the tank because it's 70-- the road is now 70 feet wide. So, I've spoken to CAL Trans. They said that they would allow me to fill the tank with a slurry of concrete because we've dipped down in the tank. There's still-- and it's kind of an eyesore, that whole thing there. So, I volunteered to do that work with them, because once you start digging, like I said, it's on their property. I can't dig on their property. And I spoke to CAL Trans twice, had them out at the site. So, they said yes, that they would let me fill it and put a bench out there and clean it up, because the old bricks have been there for 50 years or whatever. Nobody's ever cleaned it up or done anything with it. So, when I got the property, there's garbage pretty much dumped. It was just kind of a dumping site. So, they cleaned it up. It's looking a little better, but that was the thing with CAL Trans. Who else was out there? Oh, Fish and Game. I spoke to Fish and Game a few times. They're out on the site, two, three times a year clearing. So, I've spoken to them. They have a set of plans. Fire Department has a set of plans, basically. So, we've done pretty much all of the legwork on it, and actually, the community development area that rent, what do they call that? The pool and stuff. I've also sent them a set of plans. Jim, Mike Mahoney's one of the guys on the commission for that, for the area, Lock Lomond. So, they've seen the plans, too. And, you know, everybody's pretty excited about it. It's a great flat lot, you know. The handicap people will become, you know, it's dead flat. I'm a builder. I'm used to working on hillside. So, when I found a flat piece of property, I went, oh, I could retire up here. And, you know, I've spent quite a few times. The J Lodge is named after our son, who was killed working for a Georgia lottie on Highway 101. So, we decided to call it the J Lodge, and it's just a day-- yeah, the pictures are there. And the last picture on that, I kind of scribbled over it when I was doing my original drafting, was the last thing that was proposed was a Dollar General, a 9,500-square, 9,100-square-foot Dollar General up there, and the people in Lock Lomond, because it's a quaint little town. So, I drew an old type lodge instead of making something modern. I want to keep it to what it was. The two houses, there used to be a house there, a 1,800-square-foot place on the back corner of my lot there. So, there was a couple of the sheds, the rental places, and then the big lodge out in front. But that's pretty much the information, you know, that I'm passing along, that I've been working on over the last few years. So, anyway, I appreciate your time. And anything else, Eric?
No questions.
Got any questions?
Maybe some questions will come up eventually, but--
Okay.
Yeah, as we go further with any more public comment.
Yeah, and the vernal ponds is designed by a, basically, a fence all the way around it that they put in, the Fish and Game put in, that is about 130 feet to the fence from my property, plus another 60, 70 feet to the pond itself. So, it's really defined because there's a walking path for people. They allow people to walk out there to view nature. So, the walking path is in between that and the fence. So, I just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have one question for you, sir.
I just have one quick question. I'm imagining, first of all, it sounds like a really cool project, but I'm imagining that, of course, I'm very worried about the effects on the ecological reserve. You mentioned that Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife--
They're out there, and I've spoken to him, and I sent him a set of plans, too.
Okay, and they allow people to walk around the--
They allow, yeah, there is actual, a path, and it says nobody on the fence line that they put up. It's just a split rail fence.
Right.
It's posted. Nobody beyond this point.
Okay, so they don't allow kayaks on the water?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
The pond is actually, used to be a little deeper. It's very shallow. No, because there's, you know, birds landed. Basically, five months a year, it's grass, you know. Seven months a year, it has water, maybe less.
Yeah, I drove by it yesterday, and the water is quite beyond the fence right now.
Yeah, well, that's down at that end. It goes right up to the fence. At the high end of the property, it never gets past, because it's got an overflow. When it reaches a certain point, it just drops over and heads down to Semilla, down the hill that way. So, yeah, it has a certain damn height. But, yeah, it looks really full down at that end, and that's the spillway end. I'm up where it starts to raise up there.
And there's no drainage from the pond?
Well, we have a dissipator, an energy dissipator in the plans, which we get drainage coming down from the hill and the other property that will put into a 40-foot dissipator with rocks. So, it goes out evenly, disperses it, instead of rushing and creating, you know, any more sediment buildup.
Oh, okay.
So, that's all part of the design to take care of the overflow from the other five acres next to me. And the hillside comes down that way. And yet, that's a CAL Trans-approved entry, too. It's 88 feet wide, has the same curves, and when I spoke to him, he said that's the best, because we don't want to do anything with the bus stop. You know, there's plenty of room for them to pull in, turn around, and we'd just like to clean that up a little bit, put some gravel in it, so there's not puddles. So--
Thank you. That answers my question.
All right, thanks.
Public comment is still open. If there's anybody else in chambers. If not, could we check Zoom as well?
I don't have any hands raised.
Seeing as there is no public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment and a question, but it's technical in nature. The staff report and conditions of approval require removal of the underground tank, and this is the first we've heard about just filling it with cement as an alternative. Do we have to get a specific finding about that and/or change the conditions of approval?
There are regulations related to the removal of gas tanks, and I think that they are state legislated, adopted by the state legislature. I do not have them in front of me at the moment. I can certainly look them up if you would like more information on that. I think that the, how one treats existing tanks is actually governed at the state level. So, if you wanted to draft the condition in relation to making the removal, requiring the removal to be related to any and all applicable state and local regulations for the removal and appropriate disposal of gas tanks, that kind of gas tank, then that might be sufficient, unless you think in, with the information in front of you, that that would have a greater impact on the environmental impact assessment, and you think--
No, I have no opinion. I just went from a technical point of view. I wondered, since it's different than what we are considering in the staff report.
Removal versus the actual filling of the tank?
Right. In fact, I love this project. I'd be eager to see it go forward.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I couldn't tell you right now of filling that. I don't have the particulars of the actual tank in front of me. I would need to know the specifics in order to tell you if filling cement is an option under state law. But either way, regardless of any decision your commission makes today, any disposal of that tank would have to meet state regulations and local regulations.
Which would be overseen by the Environmental Health Department, and currently, the condition reads, prior to occupancy of any building, the applicant shall coordinate with Environmental Health Department to remove the existing single-wall underground fuel storage tank. We could change the word "remove." I like that, yeah. That's good. Okay. In which case, it would read, then, prior to the occupancy of any building, the applicant shall coordinate with the H to mitigate the existing single-wall underground fuel storage tank. And so, you would just make your motion to approve the conditions as amended when you're approving the project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I think the name of this is a very nice tribute to your son.
I have a procedural question. Given that the tank may not be on his property, would that present the need to put something in there to have CAL Trans accept mitigation?
I'm not looking at you, Fies, for a minute, because I'm trying to figure out an answer to that question. I was not aware that the tank is not on the property.
I wasn't either. I was under the assumption it was actually on-site.
That's why we had a survey.
We do not typically apply conditions for things that are not within the control of the applicant or property owner.
So, it's actually on CAL Trans property. It's not just on an easement?
Right.
Eric, can we add the words "subject" to CAL Trans' acceptance of mitigation?
Can we take a brief break? I need to sort of review and assess what our jurisdictional authority--
10 minutes?
10 minutes is great, yeah. Thanks.
We will continue at 10:00 a.m., 10-minute break. The time is 10:00 a.m. We will continue with this item.
Thank you for that time. The recommendation for mitigating the tank came from Environmental Health, and we should have caught that it wasn't part of the property, but we missed that detail. So, we do not have the authority to make a requirement of an applicant or a permutee on property that they do not control. So, I would recommend that the condition regarding the mitigation of the tank be removed. The permutee, Mr. Zamberlin, would be free to work with CAL Trans if he wanted to, but we can't require him.
And for the record, that affects condition number A6.
And the motion would be the same. It would be the conditions as amended.
So, I'm looking for action on this item. If there's no further discussion. Sure, if there's discussion.
I think this sounds like a really cool project, but I have some serious reservations about the biological impacts. We have this ecological reserve next door, and I'd like to just call attention to the letter that was delivered to the Planning Department from the Department of Fish and Wildlife last month. that was, uh, delivered to the planning department from the Department of Fish and Wildlife last month. It's a six-page letter. Uh, it expresses concerns about, just numerous concerns, uh, that Fish and Wildlife have. And at the conclusion of the letter, I mean, we're talking about plants and bees and bats and owls and, uh, they're very polite, they say, uh, "CDFW appreciates the opportunity to comment on the initial study for the J Lodge project and recommends that the Lake County Planning Department address CDFW's comments and concerns. CDFW personnel are available for consultation regarding biological resources and strategy, strategies to minimize impacts." And from what I'm understanding, uh, Steve Zaleski was consulted. That's great, I just, I'm just not feeling confident that enough has been done to mitigate. I've driven by the site numerous times, it's, it's just priceless, it's just beautiful. So I'm, I'm having some serious reservations about it without further environmental review. So that's all I have to say.
And if there's no further discussion from the commission, I'll be waiting for a, uh, motion.
Mr. Chair, I do appreciate my colleague's comments, but, uh, and I'm prepared to move ahead with the motion. I move that the planning commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigated negative declaration, IS twenty-one forty-nine submitted by Dan Zamberlin for the property located at one-two-three-nine-five Highway one-seventy-five Lock Lomond, APN oh-oh-oh-one-one dash oh-six-seven dash four-eight, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS twenty-one forty-nine with the findings set forth in the staff report dated January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, and as amended here today.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Uh, motion passes?
I move that the planning commission find that the major use permit, UP twenty-one forty-six, applied for by Dan Zamberlin on property located at one-two-three-nine-five Highway seventy-five in Lock Lomond, and further described in this motion, it does meet the requirements of twenty-seven dash one-one Table B, Section fifteen, Section forty-one, and Section fifty-one point four of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, and as amended here today.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Finally, I move that the planning commission find that the development review application, DR twenty-two dash one-oh, applied for by Dan Zamberlin on property located at one-two-three-nine-five Highway one-seventy-five Lock Lomond, and further described in this motion, does meet the requirements of Section fifty-six point five of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and development review be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, and as amended here today.
Second?
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Uh, note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to five PM on or before the seventh calendar day, calendar day following the planning commission's final determination.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Uh, we will be taking on our, uh, third item. Uh, public hearing, consideration of proposed major use permit, UP twenty dash eighty-eight, and mitigated negative declaration, IS twenty dash one-oh-four, for fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-four square feet of out, outdoor and mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation and associated ancillary facilities. Applicant, Leventhal Realty Lake County LLC slash Wildcat Farms LLC. Project location is ninety-two seventy-five Antler Hill Drive, Kelseyville, APN zero-one-one dash zero-one-nine dash oh-one, oh-nine, fourteen, and fifteen, zero-one-one dash zero-two-zero dash oh-three, and zero-one-one dash zero-two-zero dash two-six, two-seven, and two-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron Turner presenting this project for Wildcat Farms. Miss Green?
Oh, wait a minute, where this is not the computer, this is not connected. So what do we need to do here?
We're sharing now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. This is major use permit twenty dash eighty-eight for Wildcat Farms at ninety-two, so ninety-two seventy-five Antler Hill Road. Uh, multiple parcel numbers, um, but the, uh, the, all the operations take place at the one address. This is a major use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation, and requesting two A-type-three outdoor cultivation licenses and one A-type-three-B mixed-light cultivation license, as well as a one-type-thirteen self-distribution license on a parcel size of ninety-four point two acres. The base zoning is TPZ Timberland Preserve. It is in the combining district of special lot size and density B three. Uh, general plan is resource conservation. It is within the Cobb Mountain Planning Area, and the parcels within the vicinity are zoned rural lands, rural residential, and additional TPZ in the surrounding area. The site location, as seen here, is approximately three point eight miles east of Highway twenty-nine, and approximately three point nine miles from the nearest community growth boundary. There is a class-three water course on the site. Um, the appropriate setbacks are met. Uh, it is eight point three miles west of Lower Lake and thirteen miles southeast of Lakeport. The site was previously used as a vineyard. So adding up all the canopy, there's fifty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-four square feet of cannabis canopy proposed, um, within a hundred and forty thousand square foot fenced area, uh, called cultivation area, but it's, it's, it's the fifty-one thousand of canopy being grown. Uh, the property is accessed from Antler Hill Drive. Um, there is one existing well, and there are four proposed parking spaces with one ADA compliant. So as I stated before, with, within that canopy, there is one twenty-two thousand square foot mixed-light greenhouse, and then as well as a six thousand square foot two-story drying building and a ten thousand square foot two-story processing building. Uh, the fence is six feet tall. There is a septic tank proposed. Two fifty thousand gallon NFPA-rated water tanks, uh, will be proposed on the site, uh, will be installed on the site. And the annual water use is eight point one eight acre-feet per year. I will say that the water use and the hy- and the plan was reviewed by a hydrologist, and they concur with the findings. There is grading, construction and tree removal proposed of this site. Uh, the one point two acres of mixed Douglas fir, uh, with, uh, and black oak, oak woodland saplings will be removed under a, a timber conservation, uh, timber, a TCP, um, timber permit from CDF. That is not the jurisdiction of this commission, that, that is the, uh, CDF will be, um, CalFire, I'm sorry, will be processing that permit. Um, there's, is additional trenching on the site for irrigation lines as well. There was significant public comment for this project. Um, the concern over road damage to Antler Hill Road, concern about employee traffic, uh, odors, noise, emergency access, cultivation, uh, which would affecting the neighboring wells, pesticide use, visibility, and tree removal. The applicant did have multiple meetings with neighbors, and I'm going to have them address these, these issues. The project was reviewed for compliance within the Lake County General Plan, the Cobb Mountain Area Plan, Lake zoning, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and, uh, state regulations. The Lake County pu- General Plan, under rural lands, there were no conflicting policies in the general plan. Uh, we did identify several Cobb Mountain Area plans that could be applied to this project, where development focused on areas from low to moderate erosion potential, protection of water resources, and, um, all the required, uh, commercial activities regarding toxic substances. Article six, Timberland Preserve District, Article twenty-seven, uses generally permitted, and Article thirty, special lot size and density, were all, uh, analyzed as part of the zoning ordinance, uh, analysis, um, as well as the lot size and density. Um, you may have noticed, you may have seen additional, other site plans that had additional cultivation areas. Uh, I just want to make sure, I'm not, I don't think you got those, but if you have seen other site plans, those do not apply, there has been reduced to just this, this site. Minigated native declaration was prepared for this project. All identified impacts to resources can be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. The comment period was from October eighteenth to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, to November sixteenth, and mitigations are outlined in the proposed conditions of approval and the initial study. Those mitigations are concerning air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, noise, and wildfire. That's recommendation that you adopt the mitigated negative, mitigated native declaration for initial study twenty dash one-oh-four, and approve use permit twenty dash eighty-eight with the findings and conditions of approval. I did want to point out, within the findings, there's a reference to, uh, Chapter seven, which is irrelevant, it should be Chapter five, so violation of Chapter five, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, or twenty-six. And I will also point out that, um, we have secured necessary copies of all the building permits for the structures on-site, so that is, uh, has been verified. Uh, the applicant is here, and they, my understanding is they would like to make a presentation as well?
Sure, let's, uh, have them come up to the podium and, or are they present?
Are present.
Hi. Uh, just be sure to stay your first and last name and, uh, sign in on the sheet there, and we are ready for your presentation.
My name is Autumn Carcy, and just sign in here.
Could you say it one more time in the, uh, mic, please?
Autumn Carcy.
Thank you.
Uh, so Byron did a great job uncovering a lot of these points, so I'll zip through some of the slides that may be redundant here. Uh, my name is Autumn Carcy, I'm the owner and operator here at Wildcat Farms, and we turned in our application in October of twenty-twenty, so it's taken us quite a bit of time to get here today, and I really appreciate your time. Uh, so we've already covered the permit requests for our project. Uh, my name's Autumn Carcy, as I mentioned, and, um, I've been in the cannabis industry for many, many years. I've traveled all over the world, and I've built projects all over the world for our clients. When I was finally given the opportunity to build my own project, Lake County was the easy answer for me. This is my forever home, I love living here, and I actually live on the property where the farm is proposed. Um, I've developed facilities in twenty-five states, three countries. I'm a speaker at national conferences and specialize in environmentally responsible building practices. As Byron mentioned, we actually reduced our canopy by three acres to not disturb the forest on the red, uh, on the remaining ninety-six acres. My partner here is Shored Brooks. Um, we worked together in consulting for a long time, and he is a veteran in the cannabis industry, originally from the Netherlands, uh, he's traveled all over the world as well. He helped start the Cannabis College in Amsterdam in nineteen ninety-seven, which is a very prestigious, uh, uh, educational format for cannabis, and the Flying Dutchman Seed Company, which is very well-known. Um, he's also worked on, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand square foot Dutch-style Venlo greenhouse located in Arizona, which kind of birthed the brand Sunday Goods, which holds ten percent of the market share in the state. He's here today, and, um, he's helping us assess different varieties of cannabis and helping us breed cannabis for the appellation of this climate. And we've been doing that work with Hayes Valley Nursery in Santa Cruz over the past two years, so I think we have some really special things in store for this community. We've checked all the boxes on our application. Uh, we have our archaeology report, our bio- biological report, plant survey, our initial study, our well and hydrology test. I think we've gone above and beyond coming from development in every aspect. Um, our engineering firm is on the line, and then, uh, also Montrose, that helped us develop our initial study, uh, is on the line in the Zoom room, I believe. So if we have any questions about any of these studies, um, I'm happy to have the engineers answer them.
I have a question about the photograph.
Yes.
Where in relation to this are, um, the residences, the, the neighboring?
Right, and so I know there's a question about visibility. As you can see, I'm surrounded on all three sides by timber. There is a residence past that grouping of trees on the lower half of the property, and then there's a residence, uh, there's a gate there, and then a residence kind of lower down here. And that's it, just the two that border it. Um, but I can't see that their houses from my property or from the farm location. We are committed to sustainability. Um, we have all organic methods and inputs. We're focused on soil restoration, planting native plants and grasses, uh, as well as forest stewardship. There's a big issue with the bark beetle on all of these properties, and so in the off-season, our crews are going to manage all of the forest land on the ninety-six acres to keep them busy in the off-season of farming. Uh, this is the OCal certification, so some of you may be familiar that the term organic is, um, is, uh, USDA, right, and it's under federal protection. So we cannot say that our farm or can, your inputs are organic, but you cannot say that cannabis is organic. So we found this OCal certification program that's recognized by the CDFA um, as a, as close to organic certification as possible, specifically for cannabis, recognized by the DCC. Um, and we plan on going after the OCal certification. Our integrated pest management strategies, I know that a lot of the neighbors had concerns about pesticide, and rightfully so. It sounds like a scary word when you say the word pesticide. A lot of people associate toxicity with pesticide, when in fact pesticide can be any agent used to destroy pests. And that includes thyme, rosemary, lacewings, ladybugs, things of this nature. Um, so all of our pesticides have to fall under that OCal certification. We're held to very rigorous standards by the DCC for testing and CDFA. Uh, we've provided our IPM plan to DCC, CDD, and that was given to the neighbors as well. Uh, we test for potency, residual solvents, microbial, heavy metals, pesticides, mycotoxins, and all foreign materials. Our water conservation practices go above and beyond, I believe, what's even required by state. Um, so we're using GrowPoint soil-based moisture sensors, which we can put at different parts of the farm, and that will aggregate the water use so we can better tailor our irrigation methods. All of the water coming out of the well is measured, um, and reported to the state. We have microdrip pulse irrigation, which only delivers enough water that the plant can actually drink, and it does not overwater. Uh, we're planting native grasses, buffalo grasses, um, that help soil moisture retention, and that organic practice also helps retention of moisture within the soil and reduces water use. use. So actually you asked about the neighbors, that's the view from the front of the property and as you can see, there is no visibility from my lot into theirs. I think it's, it's at the end of the street, it's, it's pretty secluded. So the products that we're going to be making on this farm are packaged flower vape pens, not on the farm, they're from our processing facility. So once everything is dried and ready to process, these are some of the products that will be available. So we are completely vertically integrated here in Lake County, we do not ship anything out of county, so all that tax revenue, all those jobs stay here. We have solar on the house and we plan to add more solar panels to reduce our carbon And I know you guys had seen the Alchemy Twenty-nine facility, but I wanted to just pull this slide from our last presentation. We do have a facility that we're building in Lower Lake, which meets all clean room standards, G M P practices, I S O eight, and so everything that comes off the farm will be processed in a real pharmaceutical grade facility here in Lake County. It is really important for us to be good neighbors and I think I've addressed every one of the neighbors' concerns except don't have a cannabis farm here. So we've really done our best to go above and beyond and will continue to do so no matter the opposition. We do have a road from our farm, our house that leads to Harrington Flat, which can also be used as an emergency exit in the case of fire. There's a Knox box at the front of the property and the neighbors will have access, that gate will stay open if there's any kind of emergency situation. The new keypad that we're looking at, I can actually open the gate from anywhere in the world if there is an issue. So we, we, I know that there's concern about the roadway, the neighbors have all pitched in to kind of pave this road, it's not a county maintained road. We've offered to pay our share of the road and during construction, we'll mobilize any equipment through the back parcels of Harrington Flat. And that was the road originally used to build the home that Bobby Dutcher built, who's here today, and so we'll continue to use that road. And I know that they mentioned that during construction of the original property, they never heard anything, there was no disturbance because all that equipment was mobilized through the back parcels. So we'll upgrade that road and continue to maintain it and then we will bring any heavy equipment through the back side of the property. Yeah, so we're continuing to work with Cal Fire on mitigation of the bark beetle and responsible land management on the property. Thank you for letting me present.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you. Are you composting the organic waste? In an open area or enclosed area?
We haven't decided yet where the compost will go, but I think Shored can speak to that, it actually might be on a different property and be trucked in, but yeah.
I had a question too regarding, it says that the onsite resident is not part of the project, it's not part of the fenced area, but it will be used because you, that you will live in that property.
I live there, there's no cannabis processing, there's no cannabis that will be inside the property or any of the structures that are currently pre-existing, that is my home.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any further questions until after.
Okay, we, thank you for coming up and if there's any other public comment regarding this item, please come up to the podium, stay your first and last name and we'll hear what you got to say.
My name is Lawrence Jones, I'm a neighbor to this property and of course, we're not happy about the prospect of having a large commercial operation bordering us, whether it's cannabis or not. But obviously Autumn's addressed some of our issues about the road, we appreciate that and that she's going to use the back, but she stated that we can't see her property from my property, that's not true, I can see it. In fact, at night, I can see the lights of her house. The area where she's growing, proposing to plant the plants is visible from my property very clearly. I live on ten acres, so if I'm right there at my, at my front porch of my house, I can see through the trees, I can see the area where Bobby had his vineyard previously, which is now going to be, you know, cannabis growing there. So it is visible from my property and we have, our concerns, main concerns have always been the road, which is a county on maintained road that we've over the years maintained ourselves and at a lot of expense to all the neighbors recently paved it. And we were concerned about damage to the road, excess traffic to the road. One of our neighbors who didn't come here today unfortunately are like my age, have grandkids and they are worried about their grandkids and that additional traffic on Antler Hill Road. The other big concern is the water usage throughout the, you know, the, in my view, the whole county actually, the growth of the vineyards in the county and the ongoing drought, it's been a concern mine for, I have my own well and a while back, I had to replace my well pump. I put, the well pump was put in in nineteen ninety originally. I tried to find my well reports before I came here today, I couldn't find them, but so when that well pump was initially put in there, it was Duncan pumps told me what the water level was, the standing water in my well casing. And about, I want to say five, six years ago now, I replaced, I had to replace the pump. It lasted quite a while, but it, and so it was Duncan pumps, once again, that did it. And it had been a significant drop in the standing level of water in my well, it was concerning and I want to say it dropped like twenty feet. Now, I have no idea what it is now and so we are a little concerned about how much water is going to be used up here in this project and what impact it's going to have on our well and if it does have an impact, what's our recourse? We just pay a fortune to have another deeper well drilled? So that's our, our concerns and that's pretty much what I've got to say and yeah, we're not, and you know, we're not happy about the commercial aspect of this, the large buildings that are proposed to be built up there and we can see it from our property. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. If there's anybody else in the room that wants to speak?
Hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake, California. I own a cannabis distribution company out there, part of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance and have visited this property a few times. This is to speak on behalf of the applicant's character, dedication to community, dedication to hiring locally, dedication to investing locally. And I know those aren't necessarily items that are, they're relevant to the decision made by the planning commission, thank you, hello, planning commission, thank you, congratulations, Chair Chavez. Because you know, the planning commission is almost on the Clear Lake Planning Commission, it's fairly, you know, cut and dry, does this match the requirements, has the applicant met the requirements, are we zoned correctly, et cetera. But I know that this applicant, because of their character, will go above and beyond to meet the requirements, exceed the requirements such as ensuring that responsible water usage, responsible stewardship of the environment because you know, this, the knowledge base of this company is really, really broad and is a really good way to educate, not just about cannabis, but about new advances in agriculture in general as talking about the watering system. And if you see the advances on the processing system that went before this commission before, they have adhered to everything they said they were going to do in terms of the level of sophistication, conservation and commitment to community. So I just want to say that and so if there were any changing conditions of approval or evolved conditions of approval with this application, I know that they would meet that as we know, event centers, recreation centers, vineyards, tasting rooms all have to make sure that they're melding into their neighborhood, being concerned about the neighborhood. And I've also, I have a good friend who lives in that neighborhood as well and I think that there would be a great concern, both of the, both of the companies have great concern for the road and making sure that there's proper access. And the last thing, shoot, oh, commercial, we get stuck with the name commercial, just, that's just how it got written into law, commercial cannabis. Commercial cannabis can also be a specialty license, which is a ten by ten area of cannabis. So we just get stuck with the name commercial, but it can also just mean, but it's still, you know, it's an agricultural element, it's a, it's a natural element and I do believe this, this company will respect that.
Thank you for your comment. If there's anybody else in the room that wishes to speak?
Bobby Dutcher, I'm the one who, on the property, I think I bought this in like nineteen ninety-eight and I got the clearing permit to plant the vineyard and build the house and you know, in this project, I think they've had three or four letters that you received, you know, with concerns, I had like fifteen of them. So I really went there and trying to get the original conversion permit to clear it. So when we did, we tried to be as, as, you know, as light a touch as we could and trying to keep a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet buffer between the neighbors with the clearing that we did. But then, you know, with all the fires that we had, the fire prevention work that we started doing was taking all the ladder fuels off of it. So unfortunately, that did kind of open it up to sight for the neighbors, you couldn't see anybody from before, but once we started doing fire prevention work and taking the ladder fuels out, it did open it up a little bit, but there's a big buffer between, you know, the clearing and the neighbors. And then for, we had the same concerns about pesticide drift and we tried to use organic chemicals on the vineyard, but in the morning, the wind does kind of drift down and after about ten AM, it, the thermal start and all the wind blows up all day long. So we'd have to be really careful when we sprayed, you'd have to like eight AM to ten AM window that you could spray and the air would be kind of still, other than that, the wind always blew uphill. So the, the odors that the, if the cannabis plants put off, they should be blowing uphill away from the neighbors for throughout most of the day while, while everyone's up. When we drilled the well, we owned the property at ninety-two seventy-one Antler Hill to begin with, Larry Herman had dug all the wells out there and they were all two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and seventy-five foot deep. He always drilled them in the spring at the like most optimal time of year because the, the ground out there will collapse while he's drilling a hole, so he'd have to pour concrete in and he always wanted to do it in the off-season. So they'd go down twenty feet, drill, pour concrete, drill through the concrete, gain another twenty feet, it was really slow and expensive. So there, the yields that those wells put out were, it was kind of misleading, you know, that was when March and April, the best time of year and the static water level would be really high. When I went back and I sold some of those properties later on and with ours, on our well, we had to replace our pump one time, the static water levels had dropped and the yields weren't as good during the summer. So when I drilled the well on this property, I'm, got a year in advance, I said, I want it drilled on October thirty-first, the driest time of year, I want you to drill mine. So we got down to that aquifer that everybody else is at it around, we expect it around four hundred feet. It was only putting out maybe five or eight gallons a minute, like, you know, it's just not enough. So we cased through it, kept going and then we went like five hundred and fifty feet, we didn't have any water, I was just, oh my God, I'm going to have to call the whole thing off. And then, then we hit a really good aquifer at about five hundred and sixty feet and we cased the, the well down to six hundred and five feet. Now one was putting out sixty-five gallons a minute in, at the end of October of a dry year. So I think that the aquifer that Autumn's properties can be drafting from is going to be different than the neighboring draft, these aquifers are about a hundred and fifty foot difference and there was a huge difference in the amount of yield that they had. So when we cased through it, I don't think it's going to have any effect on that, but that's what I know as a real estate broker, I don't know for sure. So I've got to know Autumn pretty well since she bought the property, I still take it really personally, I personally cut every tree when we cleared that, I did all the clearing myself, I had all the equipment, we de-rocked it, you know, I built that road and, you know, we helped pitch in with the paving with all the other neighbors, you know, it was all one big happy family up there when I lived up there. So I really want to see this, you know, not impacting the neighbors either. So I think they've done everything they can to mitigate everyone's concerns and, you know, the vineyard didn't really, it was too small, it was really hard to market the grapes and I finally got tired of taking care of it, so I was pull a vineyard out. So replacing one crop with another crop, I think is something we really need to do here in Lake County, we don't want to start clearing other native vegetation and make room for cannabis if you can take an old agricultural use and replace it with cannabis. It seems like that's the place to do it, especially at the end of the road like this is, so this seems like a great project and a great place for the, but I can understand neighbors' concerns, you don't know what, how it's going to affect you till it's there and starts affecting you, but I really don't think this one, I hopefully, it won't, won't affect them at all, so thank you.
May I ask a question? Mr. Dutcher, I just had a question about the well. So the well on Amber, Autumn's property, did you dig that well?
Yes.
So I noticed in the hydrology report that the water was orange, what, has it always been orange? Is your water orange? I'm just curious.
Well, it's a six hundred foot steel casing, we cased it in steel because of how deep it was and then I just, I wanted to have a bigger, I hate this little four and a half inch PVC well, you can't get pumps down them, there's a bunch of issues with them, so I told you, I want a steel well. So it does, it will rust, when we did a couple of years ago, the pump failed, we pulled it out and you could see this orange stuff on the, and we have to have steel also on the pump, you can't use plastic because it's so deep and it's so heavy, it will break. So yeah, it was orange, it was like, it was kind of nasty looking, so we flipped it over when we reinstalled the pump, but the, the rust that, there's volcanic ash in it that turns it a little bit orange, but the other, if you don't pump the water very much in the spring, when you first start using it, will be orange, I think it's just from the rust from the, again, from the, from the pump casing.
Oh, okay, I was just thinking that it, it sounded like maybe yours was coming from an aquifer that was below this one, so maybe, I mean, I have Agland, as you probably know, down in the Big Valley area and there's areas where people have this boron in their water and other metals in it, you can see the orange that it makes on.
Yeah, you can smell it too, the wells I've tested that boron, you can, you can smell it before you even pull the test out and a lot of times they're warm, but up there, the, the water quality was excellent, once we pumped it, it was really cool. When I filled the pond, I filled the pond in June, I think it was, and first we, we sealed it with clay and it would just leak like crazy. So we were going through forty, fifty thousand gallons of water a week to try to keep the water level up, I go, you know, we can't keep doing this, it's really expensive and it's a waste of water. So we drained the pond and, so if you ever build a pond, don't use clay to seal it, just go straight to a liner, so.
I learned that.
So I bought a ten thousand dollar liner to go over my eight thousand dollars worth of clay that didn't work and so I sealed it really well then and then we just, we lose maybe a quarter inch a day to evaporation. But when I filled it, I turned the pump on full blast, put out twenty-nine gallons a minute for five straight days, I never turned it off. And I asked some of the neighbors, I go, well, just let me know if this is affecting your wells or not and they said it didn't. So for twenty-four hours a day, five straight days, that thing pumped in there and filled the pond up and it didn't, you know, the Bertellis and the Bastonis, I asked them and they said that they didn't know the difference, so that's pumping it a lot harder than this cannabis operation will pump it, so, you know, I'm pretty, I'm fairly confident that's not going to affect your waters.
Thank you for your comment.
Alicia Russell, good morning commissioners. I think that sometimes when people first hear the phrase, "commercial cannabis cultivation", they immediately think of a huge project with a lot of noise, dust, smells, emissions from equipment and I get it, farming has sounds and smells and dust. I know firsthand because I was a farmer's wife for a lot of years, we lived and raised our children in the thick of it. Our daughters loved watching the farm equipment and they loved operating the farm equipment sitting in our laps even more. Our pear orchards covered twenty-five times more land than this project sitting before you, but even at that scale, the aesthetic impacts from farming were not twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they were seasonal. But unlike our twenty-five plus acres of pears, the project before you is proposing just over an acre of cannabis cultivation and unlike our pears, cannabis isn't in the ground year-round. It doesn't need water or machinery for frost protection because it's planted after the last frost and harvested before the first one. The fallow season is often longer than the growing season, so while I certainly understand public concerns, I think it's important to keep things in perspective because we're not talking about a mega farm here. I've known Autumn for about two years and I've seen firsthand how she operates as a businesswoman and as a person. businesswoman and as a person. Autumn is mindful and ethical in her decision-making. She's also very visual, and she surrounds herself with beauty. That much should be clear by the, where she's chosen to call home. The Antler Hill property is undeniably gorgeous, and I've often heard her refer to it as special to her. She isn't going to take the land that she calls home and turn it into a blight. She's just not that person. She's not going to violate regulations or cut corners or create a public nuisance. If anything, she's going to hold herself and her operations to standards higher than what is required because that's who she is. Her word has value. She's also that person that makes dinner for her friends when they're sick and goes out of her way to be sure the people around her are happy. And she worries about the well-being of her employees. And I know that her character is not under review here today, but I do think it's important to mention because it speaks to the manner in which this project will be undertaken. And lastly, I recognize that cannabis projects in Lake County are not without controversy, but they are allowable under the county regulations. This project would not be sitting in front of you today if it did not meet the criteria set forth by our county administrators. It would not be sitting in front of you if it hadn't, one second, passed the review of all state, local, and tribal agencies having jurisdiction. I ask that you take the staff recommendation and approve this project today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Scott Barnett. I'm born and raised here, lived here pretty much my whole life. My dad was a contractor here. I'm also a planning commissioner for the city of Lakeport. And so I'm about as Lake County as you can get. Anyways, I'm not the kind of guy who shows up at a meeting like this and supports someone unless I really believe in it, which, I mean, I'm sure you guys have never seen me here before, so tells you where I'm at. I note for myself that when people bring up the word "cannabis project," you automatically think of illegal dumping, you think of illegal structures, storage containers, bamboo fencing, dump piles of plastic bags and fertilizer containers that ruin seasonal creeks. This one's not like that. This one's been, you know, they have spent a ton of money, ridiculous amount of money doing studies with civil engineers and hydrologists and anyone you can think of to try to make this thing happen. I don't think these people are here for the short term. You don't come here and do that and then turn around and leave in two years. You come here because you want to invest in that property, you want, you want to stay here. You want to create a business here, you know? This is, as Autumn has said, she lives on the property, and I think like everyone here, nobody trashes their own property if they're going to live there. If you're going to come here, you're going to keep your property nice, especially if you live on it. You know, it might be different if it's across the county and it's some rental property that you own, but when it's your own property, you don't do that. So I mean, I really believe that she's going to take care of this. You know, it's just, it's just common nature of any person that owns property. You're going to take care of your own property if you live on it, you know? So I know there's, this is a, you know, of course, there's a lot of contractors who are getting ready to start, that want to pull the plug on this, get going right now on this project. You know, there's at least 15 general contractors in the county that are ready to start on this thing, get some stuff going. So it's not just providing cannabis for certain people. It's also the trickle-down effect of local contractors and local vendors, you know, that are all gonna, you know, they're all gonna, lost my thing here, but everyone's going to benefit from this. It's not just a couple of people. It's not just someone from out of town that's going to benefit. It's a lot of people in town. So anyways, I think they're here to stay, and I think that this is something that we should consider. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. If anybody else wishes to speak, you're welcome to do so.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Bodnar, and I'm a consultant that's worked on cannabis projects and cannabis policy all over Northern California. And I'm not always excited to stand at the podium here. And I have not always been excited to stand at this podium, but I'm genuinely really excited to be here today, and I'm really proud to stand next to Autumn and Shored in this project. You know, I want to, I want to talk about a couple of concerns specifically that were raised, just to address them. First, the water's clear now. The, the pump has been replaced, and it's been clean, and the water's been tested. And this is just one example of the kind of care and attention that this team puts towards everything. The water will run cleaner on this property because they live on it. The forests will be healthier on this property because they will tend them. The medicine that they make on this property is something that I would put in my own body because I trust them as operators and as stewards. And I think that's really important to consider, you know, the direction of Lake County's cannabis industry, who we have here, you know, who's going to, who's going to bring this industry to the world because it's Lake County's name on it too, as well as, you know, the impacts to the people down the road. Big and small, I trust Autumn and Shored, and I'm really excited about what they will grow and develop on this property and then what they will move through Alchemy 29 and the, the role they'll play in the community. One other thing I wanted to speak to in terms of impacts, just, just brass tacks. The cannabis grow itself will be fenced in and will not be visible as much as possible to neighboring communities. We cannot say there are zero impacts, but we can say we're going to try to handle them all as responsibly as possible. I don't think I need to take more time. You've gotten a lot of letters. I have them in my hands from people who have written in. They all say wonderful things about the people before you, and, you know, I think the, the project plans speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else in the chambers would like to speak, if not, we'll go ahead and take a look in the Zoom room, see if there's any hands in there. No hands. One last time here in chambers. If not, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the Commission for discussion or action.
I personally don't have any questions. I feel like the amount of detail and discussion that's been on this project is very in-depth and in detail. Having the previous owner who's had experience and knowledge of, of the functionality of the wells and the impact on the property existing, going and switching from a vineyard to another crop makes sense to me. And I do really appreciate the, the PowerPoint presentation, kind of touching on things that will create a ripple effect. And also having the alternate route of Harrington Flat Road, I feel like that should and could take care of most of the issues that were brought up with the road, is my opinion.
At this point, the Commissioners have seen so many applications, and they varied dramatically in terms of content and professionalism and attention to detail. And I have to say that this is one of the best applications I've read. It's been informed by water analysis and hydrogeology, which we didn't require of earlier applicants, but it's really helped us, even as laypeople, make those kinds of judgments. And I think this is a responsible project in an appropriate area.
Commissioner has pretty much said what I wanted to say, but I did have a couple of questions. I, I do thank you. This is a model project. But we have heard some concerns from neighbors about water consumption, and, and so I just wanted to, to ask this question from this Erica, no, Nancy Jones. She said, "If our wells go dry in the future, what recourse do we have?" So that's just a question I think that we all need to be asking ourselves as we try to decide what to do in these situations. We're requiring hydrology reports, and the hydrology report associated with this project states the water use by Wildcat Farms is not expected to negatively impact other uses in the cumulative impact area. This is from a hydrologist who has analyzed the aquifers, and this is the kind of information we need to make a decision. And so I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but this has answered my questions, and, and I think that it's a model project, and I, I wish you the best success. However, I'm not going to make a motion because I have a sore throat.
If there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission find that the potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of mitigations within the mitigated negative declaration IS 20-104 for Wildcat Farms Incorporated for the property located at 9275 Antler Hill Drive and 7648, 7644, 7640, 7638, 7636, 7606, 7616, 7626, Harrington Flat Road, Kelseyville, APNs 019 dash, excuse me, scratch that, APNs 011 dash 019 dash 23, 011 dash 019, 01, 09, 14, and 15, 011 dash 020, 03, dash, excuse me, 011 dash 020 dash 26, 011 dash 020, 27, and 28. Will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the Planning Commission adopt initial study IS 20 dash 104 with the findings listed on the staff report dated January 26th, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes?
In regards to major use permit 20 dash 32, I move that the Planning Commission approve major use permit UP 20 dash 88 applied for by Wildcat Farms LLC on property, excuse me, Wildcat Farms Incorporated on property located at 9275 Antler Hill Drive and 7648, 7644, 7640, 7638, 7636, 7606, 7616, 7626, Harrington Flat Road, Kelseyville, APNs 011 dash 019 dash 23, 01, 09, 14, and 15, 011 dash 020, 03, dash, excuse me, 011 dash 020 dash 26, 011 dash 020, 27, and 28, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January 26th, 2023.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Note, the applicant or, or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven-day calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the Planning Commission's decision on the matter. Moving on to our fourth item, public hearing, consideration of proposed major use permit UP 20 dash 32 and mitigated negative declaration IS 20 dash 38 for 72,309.6 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. Applicant J Grade Organics, project location 22052 and 22066 Jerusalem Grade Road in Lowerlake, APNs 013 dash 013 dash 29 and 39.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for J Grade Organics, use permit 20 dash 32 and this is study 20 dash 38. This address 22052 and 22066 Jerusalem Grade Road outside of Middletown. Anthony Herrera and William Klein are the applicants. This is a major use permit for commercial cannabis cultivation. The applicant is requesting one A Type III medium cultivation, outdoor cultivation licenses, and three A Type 1C specialty cottage cultivation licenses, as well as one Type 13 self-distribution license on parcel 36.78 acres. We've got the other site plan, also we have engineered plans as well pursuant to the county code, so make that clear. The zoning is RL rural lands. There's also a waterway combining district. General plan identifies it as rural lands and resource conservation, and it's in the Middletown community area, community planning area. The parcels in the surrounding area are all, additional also zone RL. Property is about four miles east of Highway 29 and two miles north of the nearest community growth boundary area in Middletown. And you can see it is on the west side of the bridge, so the access isn't an issue going over the creek there. The request includes 50,972 square feet of canopy and 72,310 square feet of cultivation area, all fenced. The property is accessed by a private gravel surfaced road from Jerusalem Grade and Daily Place. There's no grading or terracing required for the site. There's an existing processing building, existing residence, and existing storage shed, electrical shed, and a drying and processing area, as well as a pesticide storage shed, all located on the property, as well as an existing septic system and lead field. This project did have an early activation permit, so it is already developed. Two existing water tanks, I'm sorry, wa, there's two existing water filtration tanks and then another water storage tank. So there's, and then those are 5,000 square, or 5,000 gallons. Then there's an additional 7,500 gallons of water storage tanks on the site. There are also three shipping containers. The project proposes a ADA compliant portable restroom for employees. The existing groundwater well has estimated yield of 17 gallons per minute, and the water usage is 1.6 to 2.48 acre feet a year. The, all the documents provided indicate that they have the ability to supply the water without impacting the neighbors. So the creek is the neighboring creek. All appropriate setbacks are met. Lake County General Plan, Middletown Community Area Plan, this Lake County zoning ordinance, as well as state regulations, were consulted on this project. The general plan analysis, again, no conflicting policies within the general plan. The Middletown Area Plan does have policies that could be applied to this project, including development focused on low to water erosion hazard, encourage groundwater monitoring, which is a requirement of all cannabis farms, and noise generating shall be mitigated. Noise shall be mitigated. Article 7 rural lands, Article 27, uses generally permitted, which is where the cannabis regulations are located, as well as the waterway combining district were reviewed. Again, with an approved major use permit, this is compliant with all of the appropriate zoning designations. Mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project. All identified impacts can be mitigated to less than significant. This was circulated from September 29th to October 28th, 2022, and as always, mitigations are outlined in the proposed conditions of approval and initial study. Aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, and wildfire were all identified as potential impacts and thusly mitigated for. Staff's recommendation that you adopt the mitigated negative declaration for initial study IS 20 dash 38, and that you approve use permit 20 dash 32 with conditions of approval. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. If there are any questions from the Commission before we open it up to public discussion, public comment, if anybody wishes to speak, please do so. We will have three minutes per person.
I just had a quick question for Director Turner. This is a 36-acre parcel, and the total cultivation area will be 72,000 square feet. I, I was under the impression that for every 20 acres, you can have one acre of cannabis. We have less than 40, so how could we have more than one?
It's actually two parcels. I neglected to say that. If you want to look at the screen. If you want to open the public hearing, I will come back with answers.
Sounds good. Please be sure to say your first and last name.
Good morning, Jennifer Smith. In a, in a much maligned area of Lake County, the J-grade, um, you know, stands out as having been the wild west of cannabis for Lake County. And the applicant has done a really good job of, um, not being a part of that and not perpetuating that hysteria or the, um, the stigma. Tony's done a really good job of developing a property that had existing structures that he could use from start to finish for his process. He's operated with no issues for two years under early activation and he's been a, a good member of the Lake County cannabis community. And, um, his time and his professionalism is very appreciated. And this is just another project that is zoned correctly and has, is not a nuisance to its neighbor and meets all the criteria. And I hope that you'll, um, approve this project as recommended by the staff report. Thanks.
I have a question. Is the footprint to be cultivated the same as the footprint that was cultivated during EA?
Um, I'm not a part of the project, but I believe, um, that would be a question.
Yeah, or if the applicant's present, yeah.
It's okay.
I haven't changed anything since, uh, early activation. Same, everything.
The reason I ask is because there's been a question which is, which is perfectly fair about cultivating on the proper number of acres. But if that, if that use was already permitted during early activation on the very same footprint.
That 70,000 square feet is, uh, in the fence, not the canopy, not.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we're, in fact, we just.
The canopy is the number that we're looking for, right?
We just confirmed that there is the appropriate acreage because it's, their license types, they add up, but the canopy is underneath the requirement because there's multiple licenses. But there, the, we, Director Turner just confirmed with me that, uh, it is appropriate, the appropriate number.
We have one type, uh, type 3, which would require 20 acres and then three type 1s, which each require five acres. So the total required to clear this permit would have been 35 acres. So we're fine.
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant. If you're done. Thank you. And what's your spacing on your plants?
I have eight foot, uh, lanes in between each row. And four feet in between each pot and they're staggered where the shadows aren't hitting each other.
Right. Thanks.
I am not good at public speaking.
Me neither.
Hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Um, I was, it, I figured the CDD would find the answer on that, but I was going to mention that you can have, um, different types. For, um, for the one acre, you need 20, but you can also have different types on, um, different sized parcels. So you can actually have less than 20 acres and still grow commercial cannabis based on the current ordinance. But while I was standing, I figured I would lend my support to this application as well. And you probably maybe wonder why you see a lot of me and Jen, Jen and myself up here. It's because we, we know so many of these applicants because we're working the LCC, the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And we know those who are truly dedicated to making sure that this community thrives, that this industry thrives, and this is one of those. And it's especially important to ensure that those who are under early activation, maybe even those who are under 215, who have a legacy doing this, who have family doing this, that they are able to move into the commercial market and thrive under that market as well. So just another word of support, um, for this project and this, uh, organization, this company, this person. For that, again, so many of the people that we see, we know would be good stewards of the environment and, um, to their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, anybody in the room wishes to speak? Uh, if not, we'll take a look at this room. Okay, thank you, Jim. If there's no further comments, um, in chambers, uh, we'll bring it back to the commission for, for the discussion or action.
I just was doing the math on the plants. Thank you. It looks like you're at about 1,593 plants or almost 10,000 gallons of water. So I think your hydrology study is based on about half of that. But I did note that your well produces 17 gallons per minute, so I'm not worried about it.
Mr. Chair, if there are no other comments from my colleagues?
Go ahead.
Uh, I move that the planning commission find that potential impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to less than significant through the implementation of the mitigations included in the mitigated negative declaration. IS 20-38 for J-grade organics, Anthony Herrera, for the property located at 22052 and 22066 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown, and as further described in this motion. And will not have a significant effect on the environment and that the planning commission adopt initial study IS 20-38. With the findings listed in the staff report dated January 26th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm, all opposed? Motion passes.
I move that the planning commission grant the major use permit UP 20-32 for J-grade organics, Anthony Herrera, on property located at 22052 and 22066 Jerusalem Grade Road, Middletown. And further described in this motion, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the staff report dated January 26th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven day calendar appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh day following the planning commission's decision on this matter. Okay. Uh, moving forward, uh, to department updates.
Thank you. All right. So I know this is the planning commission, so most of what we talk about is usually all about the planning and comes from the planning division. But I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about the other divisions that we have in our department, uh, building and safety and code enforcement. On Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, the board of supervisors is going to hold a special meeting, their governance workshop. And so every department prepared, just a little shout out about achievements, um, that, that we're proud of this past year and what we're looking forward to next year. And, yes?
Could we please take those, uh, conversations outside? We're still conducting business. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Uh, I actually wanted to give you guys the preview of what we placed on our slides for the board. If Jim wouldn't mind, now I'm putting him on the spot. Somebody wouldn't mind pulling up my PowerPoint. It's just a couple slides, um, but I really wanted to take this opportunity to share with you what we are proud of, um, in all three divisions and what we're looking forward to this next year. Well, while they're getting that up and running, I can give you the not-so-great part of my presentation today, which is an update on the old mileage claims. We requested this be removed from last Tuesday's consent agenda. Because turns out, I didn't know this, but turns out claims over 60 days old have to be processed like they're payroll with taxes taken out. The auditor's office doesn't currently have a mechanism to do this. And so they're working on it, but I do not anticipate, since they're really busy with W2s and, and it's a payroll time right now, don't anticipate. Hearing from them until March. So, super, super sorry. But I, I couldn't get them to the board to be approved yet, so, uh, I'll hopefully have a much better update sometime in March.
Are we allowed to, are we allowed to donate our mileage dollars to the?
You do not have to claim your mileage if you don't want to. Um, but it would be nice to know that, you know, you're getting reimbursed for expenses because it's, you give a lot of your time already.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I live closer than most of you, so.
If you would like to get, uh, donate them and withdraw them from that item, feel free to let Jim know via email. But until then, I'm going to keep, keep going because it's, until we get a final outcome one way or the other.
And I think also just staying ahead of the curve, you know, kind of working on the backlog is one thing.
Yes.
But, um, you, the staff has been really good about getting everything printed and having a sign and.
Well.
Once we get into a system, I think it'll be good versus the backlog.
I really like how Jim started doing the Adobe signs. That was great. So kudos to Jim on that one. Yeah, because that just makes it quick and easy so we can make sure that this never happens again. All right. What?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. Then I will get it this way, just a moment, because I sent it to admin yesterday, so I'll just. So how do I get that over to you then? Because I'm looking at them. Oh, well, yeah, I could do that. Thank you, Jim. No, not Kim, Jim. All right. On its way, Jim. And sorry Supervisor Green, that I'm giving the sneak preview and you, but you're here, so you get the preview too.
Well. You can share it from.
Yep. Now, the admin office limited me because they made the font really big, so I couldn't put much stuff on each slide. So I have some other stuff that didn't make the slides that I want you to be aware of. Awesome. Next slide, please. And keep going. All right. So in building and safety, we have, I, they are amazing. They have been staying late and studying. They've been taking tests. One of the offices that is not filled with my principal planner or deputy director has kind of become our testing room. And so all the inspectors and the plans examiners, they achieve their ICC certification, which is just wonderful. The techs, all the people at the counter have been hustling. Over 1,600 building permits were issued last year. So we got stuff going on and, and it's great to know that there's all this activity going on in, in a county-wide. The planning division included, uh, trainings also, uh, trainings for SEQA, land use, uh, tribal, making sure we're, we're in conformance with our AB 52 requirements so that the tribes don't get overlooked in planning processes. And also, uh, we sent some staff to the EOC, uh, the Emergency Operations Center, or I guess, the Office of Emergency Services, um, to do an earthquake tabletop drill. So it's really great that, that, uh, OES is, is starting to do more of these tabletop drills so that our staff, especially the ones who haven't been, you know, through all the fire EOCs and stuff like that, can sort of get a hands-on exercise and start learning what EOCs look like and what emergency response looks like in the county. We also created a position and, um, placed Julie Kennard at the, it's technically a technician position, but she is our central person for complaints and public record act requests. This is so we don't lose them. So we make, and she also sends out, I think it's weekly, uh, a weekly update to the supervisors so they know what's coming in for public record act requests and complaints in their supervisory district. Next slide, please. Code enforcement. Okay, so you can read the stats up there. And I broke it out between code enforcement, which has, um, cannabis and non-cannabis officers, as well as the roadmap task force, which was a, a project created by the board supervisors that focuses on, um, giving extra attention to a community. And they started with Clear Lake Oaks this year. So we have focused a lot of our resources just on cleaning up the neighborhoods in Clear Lake Oaks. Yeah, the roadmap task force, what, what's missing from there, you know, because I ran out of lines, uh, was, let's see. So 71 cases have opened notices, 29 are still being processed. So I guess that's all that was missing from there. But code enforcement, there's some really good stuff. They've inspected 82 sites for compliance. These are our legal grows. And I wanted to point out, this was the first year under Andrew's leadership as our cannabis program manager, that all annual site visits were completed. Some of them were done personally, like going physically to the site. Others were done via satellite. We brought onboard this satellite program or this app that enables us to see what the project looked like yesterday. So it's not like Google Maps, which, you know, was forever. Yeah, yeah. And so we completed all of our annual site visits for cannabis. We'll work on the rest of them, get those up and running. Let's see. Did we get the, wait, go back. Did we get the 90,833 pounds of debris moved? Because that was kind of significant. Sometimes, um, in our abandoned vehicle abatement program, when we're moving cars, they're not just cars. They're cars with like, that have been used as dumps. Um, and so sometimes we're towing cars with a bunch of trash. Other times, it's cars with a bunch of trash and trash that the neighborhood has decided to add to the project around the cars. So 90,833 pounds, that's pretty darn good. One thing that didn't make the list, um, was that, uh, there were a number of homeless encampments on the Lucerne shoreline and 12,500 pounds of trash and debris were removed from there. That, we also want to thank, uh, our other agencies, social services, behavioral health, this, Sheriff's Office. Homeless encampment, uh, cleanups are, are a multi-departmental response. And we really appreciate, uh, the support that we get from those other departments. Because it's not something that code enforcement could really handle just by itself. Additionally, I want to give a shout out to Public Works because they help a lot when we encounter situations that are on county maintained roads. Almost all the staff is 100% trained, so that, that is something, education has just been a real theme in the department this past year. I also wanted to give a shout out to one of our assistant planners, Mary Claybon. She, uh, completed all her, uh, degree work for bachelors. Yeah, and Trish, oh shoot, I know I'm going to miss this. Yes, Trish Turner, who was here for the first time, has also been, uh, doing her work also on, on education. So these people are inspiring. Just saying everything that they do makes me tired. Okay, next slide, please. So for next year, he probably doesn't want it to be spoiled for him for Tuesday, so, yeah. Code enforcement, we're going to continue building our inter-agency relationships. We've really, um, appreciated the improvement that we've had with the Sheriff's Office and we look forward to continuing to build on that. Also, as you know, uh, community, uh, code enforcement, um, is, is, has a long history of only operating because of grant funding, not really general plan or certain allowances of the general plan that the board has agreed to with a finite period. So, uh, seeking, uh, alternate grant funding for continued operations is important. We do have, uh, an ongoing grant for cannabis, which helps to fund the cannabis code enforcement officers. Building division, we're going to, uh, now focus on certifying the permitting team. Sometimes when I leave at night, I try not to, you know, leave at 5:00 when everybody else is leaving. I try to do the director thing and stay longer, but sometimes I can't, I can't stay long. I can't stay longer than some of the people who are staying late to study. And one of those is our permit technicians. Dana stays and is really working hard to continue. She's great. She's already offering a lot of expertise because of how long she's been here, and she helps to sort of answer a lot of questions just within the team. But she's still studying to go further, so these people are amazing. Gain more certifications for the inspection team. Yeah. I also, on my way out, I'll usually say, say goodnight to Aaron. He's working on passing, I don't even know what test it is because he keeps taking all these tests. So they're, they're awesome. Next slide, please. This is just a few of the things we're looking forward to in planning. I think that actually everything, I made this list up. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get much input from the other planners, so this is my list. We have a number of advanced planning projects that are due and that, that I'm hoping we have enough funding for to start conquering those this year. So between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-eight, let me just go over the list that didn't make it there. It's, it's a home dinger.
What's, what is municode?
Municode. Oh, thank you for asking. Now, if you've noticed, looking at article twenty-seven, if you go to look at the county code, it's in one spot, except for the zoning ordinance, which is in another spot. So we have a link just for the zoning ordinance because historically, maintaining that zoning ordinance has been done in-house, as opposed to the entire rest of the county code, which is updated regularly through a company called Municode, which I think they might have changed their name by now. But it's historically been Municode, and so this other company keeps, keeps the code up to date. Well, for the last few years, which are kind of important years in planning, nobody's been updating those. So they're out of date. And so Supervisor Green was actually gracious enough to use some of his discretionary funds as a supervisor to pay for getting this now sent to Municode so they can update it and keep it updated in the future. Thank you for asking that one. I'm really excited about that. So some of the things that didn't make this list, again, because, you know, the font's huge, is the, well, let's point out the safety element because that's like the, one of my first ones. Housing element and safety element are definitely now priorities. But with that safety element, first you have to do a climate vulnerability analysis, which informs your, not only your safety element, but probably your open space element, the public resources element. It's going to affect the next local hazard mitigation plan that's going on in the Office of Emergency Services. It will probably address a climate action plan, which I just learned I'm supposed to be doing. Didn't know that. But, and so this is going to be great when we get this done. But, so, let's see. Safety element, housing element. Those have to be done this year. Let's see. I was reading this list earlier. All the area plans have to be updated. Oh, yeah, that comes up. I don't know if I can get to those this year, but I want to definitely have them started by twenty-twenty-four because we need to have them all updated, and there are eight of them, before we launch our general plan, to make sure that it's all synced. So there's eight of those. And then, oh, aggregate resource management plan. The plan that regulates extraction of like gravel and resources from the creeks and the, near the creeks and the quarries. That's an, that's an element of our general plan. So that's on my list. And it needs to be updated because it's thirty years old. And let's see, other projects that aren't on my timeline but need to get done is updating our grading ordinance, possibly seeing if the, if the board would support development of an oak mitigation policy. We're working on an illegal dumping policy, and of course, the cannabis policy update. So we got plenty going on that we're looking forward to, not only in twenty-twenty-three, but actually for the next, you know, five years. So, okay. Do we have another slide after that? There might be one more. Nope. Okay. Well, that is my department update, not just the planning division update. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Just to take on the task and, you know, kind of peel back the layers of the, of the, the whole department up there in this. I just know everyone's very fortunate to have you. We're very fortunate to have you. We appreciate the team effort with the team leader and everything that goes along with it. So it's, yeah, you got a lot on your plate, but we, we know we're in good hands.
I appreciate that. It is an honor and a privilege to serve in this position.
Yay.
Thank you, guys, for being awesome and for getting the work done. But we will be adjourning this meeting at eleven twenty-six.